This is the May 5th Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the April 7th meeting minutes. So everyone had a chance to take a look at those?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the April 7th Planning Commission meeting minutes. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Election of officers.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we retain the officers of last year since it was their first year in those in those positions, including you as the chair, the current vice chair, and then, of course, Aubrey as the secretary. That, I would make that motion.
Second.
Quick, no discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. How about discussion now? Any other discussion?
I think you've done an incredible job.
That was it. My only question is like, if the status quo, let's do it.
Okay, I had a different recommendation, but I guess I have to go with the motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to keep the chair, vice chair, and secretary all the same from last year. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And how did the chair vote?
Thank you. I had to go along, I guess.
That was easy, thank you.
Yeah, I was outnumbered. Just to note, the historical preservation, we're doing, are we doing that tonight, too?
No, as you might remember, when we figured out last year, it's in the month after. Yeah, it was a technical glitch in our bylaws, so we're just rolling with it.
Okay, that's fine.
Some of us younger members remember that from last year.
I thought it was just missed, so I don't remember. Never mind. Okay, I guess I still have to run the meeting, so I'll continue to the next item. The schedule of meetings for 2025, 2026. Does anyone have any comments on that? Page 10 and 11.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the schedule provided. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, item number four, consider a final plat for Hope Estates addition. Justin, you want to go through that?
Yeah, we have a final plat. As per the city subdivision regulations, the final plat was submitted to the appropriate city staff, utility companies for review, along with requests that they forward proposed changes and comments. Those changes and comments were communicated to Earl's Engineering and Inspections, who provided us an updated version of the final plat. They're basically done with fixing all of our comments, so it would only be if you guys had any comments to the plat that we would ask that they would change as well, so. Otherwise, they're ready for printing of the Mylar.
Okay, are there any other comments regarding the final plat? I think most of the comments we had last time had been addressed, right? Any other questions or comments?
No, I would only comment that I really like seeing them this way with the revisions and then the final copy, so that worked out really well, and I thank you for that.
Mm-hmm, I agree. There's no other comments or motion to approve?
I move that we would approve contingent upon engineering staff receiving those remaining items on D.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to approve Hope Edition, Hope Estates addition final plat. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, cruising through. Item five, discuss the text amendment for the zoning code, Article 3.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you. Zoning text amendment for zoning regs, Article 3 continuation. Yeah, just the, I think we had a pretty good discussion last time.
Now I added some charts, too. I don't know if Aubrey can go to the next slide.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Did we add the?
I must not have.
I think it was in there when I was looking at it earlier.
The different cities and stuff.
Page 20.
Do you want me to pull up?
20 through 20 board?
Page 20.
21.
21 shows that chart.
Okay.
And that's really.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I just ran numbers.
And some basic math.
That we were doing. That way, we could kind of see all the numbers. So I guess the decision, if we're going to make one tonight, is do we want to see accessory structures taller than a primary structure?
Yeah, could you go through page 23? I was glan, I couldn't, I did, was that just determining 60% of 35-foot building height is 21?
Yes, so everything on this chart that I did, I thought we had it bigger, but so in our, these are our local codes for an RS, R1, RT, that's 35 feet for a max successor, or for a primary structure. For MP and a TC, it's 25 for a PO, or others, 35 for 50, and a CTC1, it's 50. Obviously, in a C2 and an I3, there's no max, and then I just went down and kind of made another chart of if we're going to do the principal structure at, let's just say, 80%, then the max would be a 16 for the accessory structure. And the only reason I went to the 80 is I made some more phone calls to try to understand what other municipalities do. And Derby's going through the same thing we're doing right now. They're looking to revamp that because they're getting a lot of kickback, and they're looking to go to 80%. What's difficult about any kind of percent is trying to figure out what somebody's primary structure height is. So if I, is it 80% of 35 feet, or is it an 80% of 30 feet, 31 feet? I mean, I don't want to get into the pickle of, well, this is 25 feet tall, but it should only be 24'6", if somebody were to push back. So.
Yeah. And is that peak height or E height?
Peak height, so max building height. And right now, we just have the sidewall, and that's a 12-foot, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, and I wanted to clarify.
We just want to set a max accessory structure, and if it ends up being above the principal structure in certain areas, then it is what it is. I mean, I don't know. That's the decision you guys need to visually.
Yeah, one of my concerns was I did not want to go higher than the principal structure. So, because I don't think that's a good appearance. I don't think that's a good, it doesn't look good, doesn't look right to me.
Okay.
Personally, I would like to limit it to whatever percentage we want to do, but I would definitely want to limit it myself to maximum height would be no higher than the principal structure.
What if the principal structure is half in the ground, half out of the ground? They want a garage to park the car?
I would, I would say.
Exceptional thing.
Yeah, that would be a variance.
Okay.
That would be my opinion. Because we'll still have variance requests. I think the thing to consider here, I've been thinking about this a little bit today, that, you know, if, if we're, you know, we've had a couple of these since I've been on here, and we've all been in favor of approving them for the, I think because the reason is because we thought that the peak height was more important than the sidewall height, essentially.
I agree.
Yeah, and so I think the thing to consider is anything we put in, anything we change here, we don't want to have the group thinking, okay, if someone submits a variance request for the same, for the principal structure height, is everybody going to be okay with that? I think we need to consider that because following the rules that we did the last time we went through this, and we went through those five different questions. We have to answer those, you know, is there a reason why we're accepting that? And we have to have specific reasons for that. It's hard to have those reasons a lot of times, instead of just, it just seems right. You know, that's not the reason we can approve that, the variance request. I did want to clarify one thing, too. I did, looking at the table we have, so we had four, four of the cities sets it at the principal height structure. Four of, the other four outside of Newton, the other four is the 60%. But two of them, Wichita and Mays, it says they, I, they limit it to 60% unless it meets the setback requirements of the principal structure. So the setback requirements for the principal structure, if it's, if they can put it further off the property line, then they can go to the principal height structure.
Correct.
Yeah, which is, seems like.
So when you have the bigger lot, like the Nitzels had, then they would be able to even go higher?
Right, which makes sense, some sense to me, because you're getting it away from the other properties. You know, you have bigger lots and more room to play with. I just, I wanted to clarify that because I don't think that was clear last time.
Yeah, in our infill lots, it'd be really, really difficult to do something like that, just because there is not the space.
Yeah.
Because your home is already sitting at your setback, so then you don't.
Right.
Have the setbacks of everything else.
Yeah, I wouldn't want a big shed on a property line, or with five-foot setback, yeah.
Yeah.
So no other city is looking at sidewalls for this?
Not from the research that I've done, so. Yeah.
So it would probably be move us to change that, then?
Correct.
Well, if you have a 612 pitch on your house and a 412 on your accessory structure, you can have a pretty tall sidewall. Something to think about, I think.
Yeah.
Jay, what's the detriment for the sidewall? Like having a, like if we go above 12-foot on the sidewall, what is the, you have an opinion on that? I just wondered with your ears.
I'm good with 12-foot, I really am.
Any other thoughts?
I think we had, I think we had challenge, Mr. Chairman, I think we had challenges with, with the limit of a 12-foot sidewall, especially in some of the areas. I, I think something between 60 and 80% of the structure height, peak to peak, would be okay with me. And because I think, depending on where you're positioned, if it's behind the main structure, it's going to be hidden. That's the, that's the part, nor do you want something to look like a silo beside a house. So I'm, I'm open to where, where it could be, but I'm, I think we saw what happens when we limit the sidewall. Although, engineering-wise, that's the challenge when you start increasing the height of the sidewall, is the engineering of the structure. So.
What's the minimum pitch required?
There's not one, I mean, it would just be the rolled roofing instead of shingles, or, you know, that.
Okay.
Once you go so flat?
Yeah.
The 2%.
I'm not really in favor of the 60% for the same reason I brought up last time. You know, if you've got a 15-foot height house, 60% is only a nine-foot accessory building. That just, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, so. I think 60% is too low. I'd be, I'm scared of going all the way to 100%. 80% seems like a relatively good number in between. Because that gives, on a 15-foot, that gives you a 12-foot, so 10-foot height sidewalls with some peak.
And a single story is typically 10 to 15 feet on a primary, so.
What other cities besides Derby's looking at the 80%?
Derby's the only one so far.
Only one right now?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm, I'm kind of with Arlen. I, I was a little, I didn't want to go to the primary height 100%. 80%, I, I thought 60% might be a little on the low side, but actually 80% seems reasonable to me. And in special circumstances, if, I mean, there was, there will still be variance requests coming in if, you know, potentially if there's a different situation, we're not going to be able to cover every situation. We just generally want to cover most of the situations. Yeah, is.
Yeah, I think I'd be, at this point, you know, for making a change, I think I'd be more interested in 80% than, I'm with you, I'm a little, I'm a little too scared just to go same height.
What, let's go through the process of this. So if we make a recommendation tonight, what is the process moving forward? Do we have to have a public hearing to change?
This, it could be a public hearing tonight because we tabled it, and it's been, it's been noticed out.
Okay, I didn't know if there is, then we have to review any, any other, okay.
Nope, we would just make this change and make, open it to a public hearing, and then it goes to City Commission for approval, I believe.
I guess, let me ask, do we like this caveat about unless the accessory structure meets all the setback requirements? Like, do we want to say 80% and that? Like Wichita has 60 in that, so do we just want to say 80 in that? That might cover some things we're not thinking about right now, those bigger lots of weird spots that maybe we're not.
Well, accessory structures have to meet all the side back, setback requirements now.
Or they have to come to us anyway.
Or they have to come.
Yeah, so I didn't know if there's some, something we want to put on there where we try to catch? If there's, if that's there for a reason, trying to catch something people aren't thinking about.
We'd probably want to try to catch something.
Like, that's my thought. Is it out there for something we're not? That it's got to meet the same, if it meets those same requirements for the principal, then you can kind of give it a little more leeway.
Yeah, I think the 80%, and Justin, maybe you have more history than I do, but, you know, the couple we've lessened, the 80%, both of those would have met that condition. And those are larger, larger sheds, you know?
Yes.
I, I personally think that would be enough, myself.
That works.
Yeah.
Just asking, Mays and Wichita had it, I thought, what are they thinking about that we're not?
Yeah. Mays probably followed, Wichita, Wichita has a lot of different variables there.
I think Derby's the most progressive city there is in town around now, because of how big they're going.
I would ask for, if you're going to do the 80% of a height of a principal structure, guidance on how we should accept a permit when somebody comes in and says their building is 20 feet tall, 30 feet tall, 40 feet tall, I have nothing to go off of. So if I could have your typical 10 to 15 is a single story, you know what?
How do we do that, though, if you have a higher peak roof? Then you can't say a single-story ranch when, like, my peak's incredibly high compared to another, on another house. Would we have to measure, have us go out and measure it first?
That's what he's asking.
Well, that's what I'm saying, do you know how tall your roof?
So, yeah, would that be possible to send you guys out to measure?
Could we have them certify the height of the roof?
Yeah, right, is that what we're looking for, if they're gonna?
Yeah.
So that's an expense for them to come tell me, or get somebody out there to measure it?
Yeah, just on their application. Is there a question on the height of the structure?
There's not, yeah.
There should be one. Yeah, there should be, definitely. And they have to sign that, right? So.
Yeah, they're signing the building permit?
So they're essentially certifying it by doing that.
Would there be writing in there saying if that's not correct, then can't turn it down, but.
Right.
Then they come to us and we do it again.
Right, right, you're right. Because you get, you get a neighbor that's going to say, well, it's not 35 feet, because whatever, I mean. I'm trying to avoid a previous situation again, so.
Yeah, I hate to get deeper. We could require them to survey it, but that's an expense that probably isn't needed.
Not for a shed.
Not for a shed, yeah.
What was the requirement, property, square foot property-wise, on how large this accessory structure?
It was 800, it was 800 square feet or 10% of the lot, whichever was greater. And that's still, yeah, in play.
Let me ask you guys this. So when I built my shed, you came out, and you looked and looked at the setbacks and, I didn't have to survey that, though. But how, so when they get a building permit, how do we know where they put it on their lot? Just off a map, just off a lot plan?
Yes, and then normally would have them do a stakeout. So who stakes? And it's to our best knowledge is when we inspect that it's five-foot or seven-foot off their property line, or 25-foot. It all depends on what setback they're coming off of. But it becomes a civil matter between the two neighbors if somebody says, well, you're four-foot, not seven-foot, and you're too close to my property. Same thing with the fence. We don't even go out and do those for that, for that purpose. You know, it's between you and your neighbor.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, we have our height restrictions and stuff like that that we can control, but.
So if there's, if there's a dispute, would the city require them to go get a survey or to, for, to establish the property lines?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And there's so many fences out there that we just go off of that, okay, be five-foot off your fence, because the fence has been there 100 years and no one's complained, type of video, so we kind of fall on that at times. Right, yeah, yeah. Correct.
But see, I think, I think, oh, go ahead, Jay, I'm sorry.
For fire.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, see. Yeah, but they have to meet all those conditions, right? Yeah. So that's up to them.
So, so nothing's, I mean, honestly, for you, nothing is really different. We would make them turn in their application, and we would say, what's the height of your current residence on the application? It's their word for it, anyway, which is the same as their word that they build up where you staked it.
Okay.
You know, right? Am I wrong?
Yeah.
It's the same principle.
Put it on the permit and ask them to sign it.
Yeah, that was my point, was if that, if a dispute comes up because of the physical location of it, well, this is the same thing, if there's a dispute because of height.
And that can be a conversation with Chris Baron and I at a later date, too, on the legalities of it. I just want to make sure that we're aware.
Yeah, okay.
You're assuming they're going to get a permit before they start, though.
Right.
Same issue we have now.
Well, that's.
Same issue we have now, yes.
That's a whole different story.
It's a daily one, though. Okay.
Yeah, just a, Baron, do you have anything to add to the discussion? Thank you, sorry. Yeah, yeah, anyone from the public? We want to open up a public hearing? Nothing? Okay.
Harvey County now is no.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did, I did.
So I think just to get something started, I'll, I'll put a motion out there to, for this particular accessory, can't be more than 80% as high as the principal structure, and let us discuss from there.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor? 80% of the principal structure height? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no.
No.
No. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Any old business?
Yes, I'll just make a quick comment. From our last Planning Commission meeting for the, in the topic of murals, there was two concerns. One was creating a definition that differentiates the digital signage by, by size, I believe. And then there was a question of how other cities maintain their murals. I'm going to be looking into that more, and I'm going to present something to you all the next Planning Commission meeting, whether that's bringing in the, bringing in the Lawrence, Lawrence's artist contract and going over that. I kind of need to talk with Justin, too, or see what you guys mean in the differences of height size, because this is more like a calculation to me, because you're going to be making, going to be making a definition based off of the differences of sizes, I think, that's what it was. So that's, that's it.
Cool, very good.
Thank you.
And I, and I think the third concern was, did we need a separate, what would you call it, between murals and signage, that they needed to be separated, not all within, lumped in within one rule? Is that?
Yeah.
Ordinance, ordinance, probably is better.
So third ordinance. Okay.
One other item, comp plan. Was there an update on the comp plan status of getting so on?
We are reaching out to references at the moment.
Oh, okay.
And we've heard back from quite a few, but still waiting on some more to hopefully roll in.
Cool.
So, yeah. Did you have anything to add?
Okay.
Any other old business, Justin?
I don't have anything.
Okay, any new business?
Nothing here.
Cool. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Ready?
We'll move on to May 5th Historic Preservation Commission agenda. First agenda is consider approval of the December 2nd, 2024 minutes, if anybody can remember them.
I've moved their approval.
Second.
First, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Same, opposed? Carries? Review of 309 Fifth Street demo.
Well, good evening. We haven't had one like this before, I don't think. What we have before you in all 135 pages of application is a property on 309 East Fifth that is currently bank-owned. The applicant is a real estate agent out of the Wichita area, but the property owner itself is a federal home loan mortgage corporation. Because they are a unit of Freddie Mac, I do have an ongoing question out to the Kansas State Historic Preservation Office to see if this would trigger a 106 review. We're leaning towards no, but we're going through this process anyway, because regardless, this process has to move forward. For those of you that might not remember what a Section 106 is, is anything that touches federal monies needs to be reviewed at that level. That would be done at the state, but our portion here would still need to be done. So we're going to be looking at this. In this project, we have a home that is a non-contributor to the district, and I apologize, we do not have items on the screen, because with all of the photos that were submitted, it seemed better to just give you the printed copies. It came to the applicant's notice because they thought we were within the amount of space to the downtown districts. They didn't even realize that there was the McKinley District. So in their application, they'll mark where it is off of the, to downtown districts, because they were just looking for HUD's requirements for demolition, not realizing that the house itself was in a third historic district. So it is a non-contributor. We have very little information to go off of from the survey. They're asking to demolish the home due to costs. It was over $300,000 to bring it up to where they would need to as the lender, and just over 60 to demolish. So that's in the letter that's on page 10 of your packet, discusses the qualifications that they need as a federal home loan owner, and how they came to this decision. And then all of the rest of the supplementary materials are what they submitted as part of their review. As you can tell, they took quite a thorough look at the property to come up with this amount. So, again, pages and pages and pages of photographs and estimates that they had gathered. It is in state of disrepair. This body, according to its certified local government agreement with the state of Kansas, is not in a position to approve this project, as it would damage or destroy the historic resource, which is the district itself. As a non-contributor to the district, the specifics of the property don't necessarily matter in this case. We're looking at the overall fabric of the district itself. So the guidance is typically, in cases like these, regardless of the status of the building, this body has to deny the application based on the local government agreement. However, if you feel like the applicant has merit and you would like staff assistance in their appeal to the City Commission, which would be the next step in this process. We've done this for a shed recently, that a homeowner came and brought us the shed that was fairly much beyond repair. This body denied that application. The applicant worked with staff and the city clerk to provide a proposal to the City Commission, and the City Commission overturned this. That is an option in this case. Or if you have other ideas or thoughts that you'd like to have taken, those will be written down in the minutes. Those minutes will also go to the state Kansas Historic Preservation Office. All demolitions have to have their review for 30 days, and we'll need to move forward with that by certified letter.
So you're saying the choices are, A, we can rule upon this, or if we, we have to rule upon this?
Yeah, there, the choices, there has to be a decision made. Commissioner Harris has something to say. And sadly, the decision that holds us in agreement with our certified local agreement is to not allow it, no.
No, you said you did have an option, you sent this to the state, so we can't be.
Now, you said you did have an option, you sent this to the state, so we can't be in a holdup pattern till the state or till the, the state Historic Preservation says, yes, you can demolish it. Can we, can we?
Well.
Table it till then?
Well, you, you could table it, that is an option. You could also, if you felt like the applicant was warranted in their request, you could recommend that staff works with the applicant to send it to the city commission, who can overturn this body's ruling, which they have done in the past. But the final say would have to be, the state can always, actually, the state can always override it. And what they would do is they'd initiate a section one oh six review, which they might potentially do anyway because of the involvement of the federal home loan program. But this has to happen regardless. Because it is, uh, our, we have our own district, our own local ordinance oversees our own district. So this is a necessary step. Sorry, Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I had a question, Mr. Chairman, if that'd be all right. And that is, um, has the lender exhausted? I mean, have they put it out for RFPs to see if it could be sold to somebody who would? I mean, if they're gonna spend sixty-four thousand dollars to tear this property down, have they, um, requested, um, you know, proposals that if they granted sixty-four thousand to, to, I mean, they're gonna spend sixty, I mean, I'm, I wanna know what they've done. I mean, the, the simple answer is not to just tear down a building, but to take a look at how it can be saved. Sorry.
So opening this up to discussion with us.
Again, it's that lane.
I know, I know.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So I might be able to answer.
Yeah.
Part of that. I had the same type of question. I, I have not seen this property on the market. I have known about this property for quite some time. Uh, in fact, um, the door's open if you want to take a, a cruise through it. And, and I did so, uh, probably two years ago. I, it surprised me when they just got it released in October of twenty-four, 'cause I've known about this property for quite some time. Um, it is in quite amount of disarray. It does not surprise me that they would want to demolish. But it has not been on the o, open market and I, and I wonder why. I mean, if we could get somebody to buy it for fifteen thousand, they're eighty-nine thousand dollars ahead if it's gonna cost them sixty-four thousand to turn it, tear it down, which doesn't make any sense to me. Um, although I do know Freddie Mac's mission has changed, uh, just within the last three years where when they get a property back, they actually rehab the property and then resell it already, um, being able to be part of the FHA program. So they've put lots of money in those sometimes.
And I would.
So this does not surprise me that it comes up to this much money, but it, it hasn't been on the open market.
Correct, to both of those pieces, Commissioner. You'll notice in the letter on page ten, they actually note that, that in the first paragraph, it says, when assets are foreclosed, Freddie Mac's single-family disposition through Homesteps, a unit of Freddie Mac, processes the assessed assets to bring them to a minimum level of C four, which is fair, with lender required repairs completed and in some instances determined to bring them to C two good is appropriate for owner-occupant buyer. So the reason this is going through this process is really, on page ten and eleven of your packet, they got this, the real estate agent got it, took it as an assigned asset and then they went through the process and the procedures with Freddie Mac. And this is where it's come to of, like you said, I don't think it's ever been on the open market. I've never seen it up for auction. Um, it had very few environmental complaints when we looked into it. They were just an inoperable vehicle and some mowing. Not a large number of permits pulled, but also not an unusually low number of permits pulled for this area. So in other ways, for staff's perspective, it's rather unremarkable piece. Nothing particularly pops out.
Yeah, and I, and I get it that we don't want properties in this particular, these, you know, in the, in the rehab areas torn down, but sometimes, sometimes that is the, the only way to save the rest of the neighborhood. And another question I have is, we, we have had properties in this historic preservation area that have been tore down.
We've had a couple, um.
Third Street had one.
Uh, not since I have been here, so it's been at least five years. We've had, we've had some outbuildings, but yes, we have, you're right. There have been a couple.
And, and.
And this is a procedure.
Very nice properties rebuilt in.
Right.
In their spots where.
Exactly, because it is in a historic district, the, the infill development has to abide by the historic preservation guidelines. So the infill afterwards, what, what Freddie Mac does with the property, once they demolish it, I'm guessing they would sell it again. And then the, the infill development would have to meet the standards of the district as a whole. So that is correct. Again, this is more the procedural aspect of it as if, if you, if you do want us to work with the applicant, although it's not technically the property owner in this case, we have done that in the past. We've helped them through the steps of taking it through the city clerk to the city commission with the understanding that it is in this level of disrepair. But this is not a property that we actually have been out to that I know of, I asked. I don't, have you, you haven't heard anything on this property?
Well, let's, let's go.
I was gonna say the same thing.
So I can't, I can't, I can't speak on it more directly with any other staff experience. Sometimes we have, sometimes we've been out at the property and we have more intimate knowledge.
It, it's, it needs a lot, I mean.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think if you were a contractor and doing a lot of the work yourself, you, I mean, obviously you can get that number way down.
And that number's really high if you're a contractor wants to work for the federal government.
Absolutely, no, no que, yeah, I mean, it's not worth, I mean, it's not gonna take you that much by, by any stretch of the means. I guess I, I, my, my comment or my thought process would be, I'd, I'd be much more, in with the thought process of tearing it down if it had been on the o, open market and, and we have literally nobody that wants to touch it, uh, which would shock me if that was the case. And I realize it doesn't meet their Freddie Mac guidelines, but that, that's not our problem. That's the government's problem. And if that was a last resort and they weren't able to get it done on the open market, I think my position would definitely be, let's get it tore down because it is, it is definitely an eyesore for the area.
I wanna ask a question. So the condition of this, it's not inhabitable. Would it be?
Well, I'm not, we're not.
Well.
I don't know whether it's inhabitable. We only have the packet in front of us, we have.
Based on this, yeah, there's, I mean, foundation issues, uh.
I, I just wanna be.
Yeah.
We haven't.
You wouldn't live there, but would somebody live there?
Maybe, maybe.
I mean, that's, inhabitable's a tough word.
Yeah, the question I had was, um, when a property gets in disrepair so far, when does the city come in and say, gotta do some, gotta condemn it, gotta tear it down? I mean, are we close to that? How long do we go with this being in bad condition that nothing's being done to?
We could take anything to the court system and then it would be the judge's decision if they wanted to demolish it.
Okay, yeah, so that, that was the only question.
Usually that's on like a firehouse and it's a percentage of value to the percent to get it fixed.
So.
But we would, would we utilize the same mechanisms in this application to, we would, to, the percentage of value to get it fixed? I mean, that's kind of what they've done here is run that cost-benefit analysis. Um, I don't know if we would have the same metric as. There's, okay.
So we only have two options though as a board, is either to table it or to deny it, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So there's that. Any more discussion?
I wish Roy was here. I, I guess I'm kinda shocked he's not here, but.
Yeah.
You know the real name?
Oh, yeah, Roy Foster company, yeah.
Roy John?
Um, I don't know the last name, but.
That means middle name.
Oh, I don't know.
I know Roy John Foster.
If we didn't deny it tonight, what, what are the next steps? How does it move forward?
If this body were to not deny it tonight, we would work with the applicant to get it on the city commission agenda, either for the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh, depending on what's most feasible with our current scheduling. The city commission would hear the request, they would, the applicant would have to be present, most likely. And they would either vote to overrule this body's decision or not. Then after that, we would send copies of those minutes in certified mail to Kansas State Historic Preservation Office with the notice. We'd wait thirty days and then we would be able to, if we hadn't heard any other comments from the state Historic Preservation Office, we would be able to issue that demolition permit. So, but if there was something else, if there wanted to be conversations or there wanted to be other things, again, nothing in our records indicated that the city has had, except for some very minor environmental violations, any interactions with this property. Again, like Justin had mentioned, usually when courts are involved, we've had multiple, multiple. That's why I hesitate from using the word uninhabitable, 'cause we use that in a very specific sense. And we haven't had enough interactions to know one way or the other.
So if we have those two options, tabling it really doesn't do us any good, essentially.
The only thing that you would do with tabling it is then.
This will, this will still go to city commission?
Well, it would, it wouldn't, it would.
Until we see it again.
Till you see it again. You would see it again and if there was something that you wanted done in the meantime, if you wanted.
But the city commission can make that decision too, right? I mean.
No, they, it has to come through this body first, there has to be a decision.
But if we deny it, they can go back to the state or they, they can basically push to, to demo the property, right?
Through the city commission.
Through the city, I mean, it, there, there has to be a decision made at this level first.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
Regardless of tabling or.
No, the only, the only difference that you would get from tabling it is if there were any environmental violations you wanted to explore further or if there was a method to do that. And I'm not sure, Justin could probably tell us if we've, I don't know.
Usually, I mean, without any complaints, it would, it would take quite a bit still for it to get it on the docket somehow.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, we'll close discussion.
I guess I'll make a motion to deny the request.
I'll second that.
We have a motion is second, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All in, not in favor? Same? Looks like it passes that we deny it.
Okay, but then, then I'm looking for the will of this body of, do you want us to work to make this a speedy demolition through any other methods for staff? Or is there any other things you want us to look at in that process?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask that, um, that the owner and the owner's representative see if there is somebody, you know, to either put it on the market, to see if there's another option, because I was in favor of turning this down because I don't think that there was an effort to find. And I, I think there have been houses in really rough shape that have really been turned around, not this rough.
No, oh, no, absolutely, I've seen some.
So I'm.
Amazing turnaround stories, yeah.
You know, and one of them, you know, yeah.
Can we amend the motion with that caveat on top of that saying, we deny this however we wish that the?
Or we deny it because.
We can.
Because of.
Yeah. I mean, you can, you can do that or we can just add, we'll add the discussion in the minutes that.
Okay.
I didn't figure it mattered in my motion that I, the reason I've denied is because it hadn't been on the open market in my mind.
Okay.
That we haven't, they haven't done everything, but.
Right.
I didn't think I needed to make that in part of the motion.
No, so the, the motion itself for state law is that you're denying it because it's, you know, destroyed or damaged the historic neighborhood. But this is a direction to staff that you also feel like there are other options that have not, other potential avenues that have.
Save the asset in the community, which is.
And housing is something we're a little short on right now.
What's that?
I said, housing is something we're a little short on right now.
And you don't know who's out there looking for a home, who's got a contractor that's an uncle or a father or whatever said. You know, and, and houses like this don't get fixed up all at one time. They get a living room, a kitchen and a bedroom that they can live in and then they work through the rest of the.
So does this comment need to be made singular through me or will the minutes as we talk be given to them?
No, we'll, we'll make sure it gets all in there together.
Okay.
So.
Even in, even on that block, there have been some really rough properties that have been brought back to life and, and some of them look very, very good.
So then, um, I will reach back out to the applicant, letting him know that it's been denied and letting him know that the commission would really like to see if there's any other avenues to get it on the open market outside of this, just to, just to give the option for the rehabilitation maybe to another, um, buyer that's not the federal home loan program.
And we accept, expect to see an open house sign out front. You don't need one. Well, some of us don't wanna break the law. Some of us.
So that's. Looks like we can move on to old business? No old business, moving on to new business?
I'm just gonna put one quick piece, um, out for our new business. It is the time of year again that we apply for the Historic Preservation Fund grant and, uh, working in conjunction with, um, our Main Street program and our CBB, we are putting together an application to expand our historic walking tour. We use something called, um, Story Pocket Sites. It's a digital app, it's the same one that's used in Wichita on a lot of the surrounding communities. We were able to digitize our walking tour through a previous grant that did really well, actually. Harvey, Harvey County Historical Museum's curator got to present at a, um, museum association conference in November and then we brought it up again at a tourism conference. So we had a lot of success on that and we're wanting to build off of it utilizing, um, podcast-style, um, audio that it stores on there as well. So, um, the idea would be to put up, um, photos with kind of like a cling film in some of the areas in the downtown area in our C three district so that you could maybe see a photo of somebody that's from Newton or a historic building and have a QR code and it would take you back to that, to that walking tour app and you could actually hear the podcast. Um, and just make, make the history a little bit more interactive and hopefully make some more fun things to do for the people that like to take our day trips up here. So just letting you know that that's on the radar.
That's cool. What's the name of that app?
It's called Pocket Sites.
Pocket Sites.
Mm-hmm. We have a, we have a bunch of wonderful tours on there. Chris McCord does an incredible job of putting together a lot of the historical photos that we have and has done, has done a couple of them and we're just trying to get as much use as possible out of that app.
Can you get that in the minutes so we can? That'd be awesome. Any other new business?
I would, I, I have a question. Are, are we doing anything that, um, I know there's the, for the Main Street, for the Main Street USA communities, they're, um, encouraging people to do homes, you know, take some of those upper spots and turn them into apartments and stuff like that. So we looked at our, um, city revitalization code, because I'm hearing from people who said, you know, I wouldn't mind buying that spot downtown 'cause it's got an open space upstairs, but because it's not been occupied as residential, it's gotta be sprinkled because it's above a commercial area. We looked at why that is and if, if, if that's actually harming our downtown revitalization because we're not, it, it really knocks out a lot of that feasibility.
That is an absolute great point. We have worked on that extensively in the past two and a half years. Justin's in, working on it, our fire marshal's been working on it, our city manager's been involved. Um, we are taking steps to try to make this as, to mitigate this as much as possible. When we became a Main Street, a credentialed Main Street community in, uh, twenty twenty-two, the year of our sesquicentennial, um, I asked Justin and David that year to sit through their first, um, existing building code seminar and it was very long and I'm pretty sure very dull because I didn't get very happy smiles after they got done. But we're trying to, trying to take all of the tools in the toolbox and in our strategic plan and coming up and probably short order is, we just updated our fire code and met with the state fire marshal's requirements and the building code will include that existing building code. Now, what that does when you're discussing upstairs residential is it gives you a few more options, but it's not a silver bullet. And I want to be really clear about that. Sprinkling is outside our realm. So historic preservation and zoning code and all those things all fall second to health and human safety. And sprinkling comes under the jurisdiction of the state fire marshal. So those requirements about sprinkling in upstairs residence sadly are out of our hands completely. Those aren't local. Those aren't local decisions, they can't be local decisions, that code has to be approved by the state fire marshal. We sent them the updates, those sprinklings still exist for 99% of the occurrences, because that's a ruling that's held at the state. Now, what the existing building code will do is maybe in one or two situations, hopefully, we can utilize that to give us some flexibility in every single place that needs to be sprinkled. And Justin can speak to this much more eloquently than I can, for maybe a single, the way I've seen it done at conferences, that they always tell me, you got a cute little building, and the owner, owner has it in its one unit, owner occupied upstairs. And oftentimes, that doesn't hit the sprinkler requirement using the existing building code. So we're trying to make it as absolutely feasible as possible. One other thing that I would remind all of our builders and developers, that one of the best things about being a contributor to a historic district is those historic state stack, historic state tax credits. And that's a really, really powerful tool, and things like sprinkler systems can be utilized in that tax credit to help offset that additional cost. So those are things we try to promote as best we can, but it's certainly something we've spent an enormous amount of staff time trying to figure out all the pieces.
So are you saying that the city commission could not create their own downtown ordinance that could override having to sprinkler a second floor?
Yes.
Is that what you're telling me? It cannot be overridden?
No, that's the state fire marshal.
So, second question on that. So, I mean, we don't, we don't require a 10,000 square foot house to be sprinkled. If, if it's going to be utilized as a residence, is there a way that we can affect any zoning to make it go residential, to get it out of a commercial designation? Like change the second floor to a residence, instead of it being a commercial designation? Is there any way we can get around it by changing a zoning for that piece?
It's not a zoning issue. Zoning, zoning has an overlay in building code, but it doesn't, whether it's in building, whether it's a residential or a commercial use, is, is actually a little discreet from the zoning. It's, it's separate issues.
Well, but they're requiring it as, because it's commercial. They're not requiring it because, I mean, the only reason they're requiring is because it's, it's a zoning, a commercial zone.
Above a commercial.
From what I understand.
And it would be attached on the sides as well. The problem is with that, with old buildings, they're like, they're like blocks, and they're, they're so stuck together, it's really hard to say something's not touching, because it, because it kind of is, there's a lot of shared walls.
Right.
And in our zoning code, the reason you have a downtown district, the reason you have a C3, is because you do want commercial on the ground floor as much as possible, and sometimes even upstairs, if you've got office buildings. That's kind of a major goal, is, is to drive at economic, that commerce activity. Now, on the flip side, we don't want to leave everybody high and dry because these are expensive. So also, please remember that in the neighborhood revitalization program that the city commission has in place, if you revitalize a building in the downtown, in the C3, if it has C3s, and you get your NRP application in, you get rebated for 10 years, 100% of the difference, the increase in your property taxes after a renovation, up to the amount that you put on your building permit. So we do try to, at the local level, see that investment and offer a little bit of reprieve to that, because we do understand that this is, this is costly. So it's definitely a piece that we see, and we try to offer as many tools as possible to make the burden on the property owner or the business owner as reduced as possible.
And this requirement coming from the state fire marshal would apply to every community in the state, right?
Correct.
That's nothing specific to.
No, correct, and they've put out stop work orders for people that have not been.
Because we hear all the time, well, Wichita's allowing it, or they're not allowing it, they're not. It's just what they're hearing, and it's not true, because state fire marshal rules over all municipalities.
Right.
And it's not just our downtown, it's, they're looking at triplexes and row houses and all that kind of stuff, where we thought we were a common wall after a duplex and having a firewall. They're saying that in the long term, the lot line is not separating them. So row houses now could possibly sprinkle it and stuff like that, so it's an issue.
When it's more than three, right?
If you want to get involved.
More than two.
More than two.
So it's, so it's, your legislator's got to, they're the ones that, they're the only ones that can override then what the fire, state fire marshal would say. Is that what you're saying?
Need to replace the fire marshal.
And it's happening across.
Now, are you guys pushing back as far as municipalities go? Like talking to Stephen and our senators and our representatives, or is there another group of us that need to do that?
You're more than welcome to, it's in Chris's ear.
Okay.
So it's, but it's, there are a handful of people that I'm aware of that are pushing back.
And our city's not alone on that.
No, no.
We are absolutely not alone on that.
If you, if you go back and.
MABCD is the big push right now, they've, I know they've got.
Who's that?
Wichita.
Wichita, MABCD.
Metro.
Metro area building.
Okay.
They, they're leading it, they're on their horses and basically into Beka right now, so.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, if you remember, when they, when we adopted the new fire code, that was a piece of it, is that they had sent a number of amendments and requests for those amendments to the state fire marshal. Our city attorney went through those pieces and said, you know, we wanted to move forward, we wanted to get updated regardless, because there were some really important things we needed in the, in the updated code, but there were definitely some outline concerns. And just remember that the way fire, international fire code is written, and some of you that have experience with building or designing in other communities, all buildings have to be sprinkled, everything sprinkled. We have an exception here for one and two family dwellings. But if you go to other areas, even other areas very close to us in Oklahoma and Texas, if it's, if it's being newly built or rehabilitated, everything is sprinkled, absolutely everything. So it's, it's just a difference.
We made it against public policy at the state level for one, two family residential.
Good waba, or which one?
No, just builders, builders don't want to take all that credit.
This is a really helpful discussion to have, to talk to people about when they say, Newton won't let us put apartments in, it's not that simple. We're friends with Andy Harter.
I'm still blaming Andy. So we're blaming Andy, it doesn't matter.
It's his fault.
So hopefully, maybe does that answer the question?
Yes, it really does, and it gives, gives me some ammunition to talk about some ways that they can help pay for those sprinkler systems.
Right, and, and just.
Is that a tiered tax abatement, or a cliff tax abatement, 10 years?
The 10 years, it's just 10 years, 100% to the difference. But remember, it's up to what the number is on your.
Tax assessment.
Well, no, on your permit. So I try to remind applicants that maybe you do have that uncle that's a contractor, and you're using those leftover materials in the back shed. Please put the value of the work down, because I get that it probably costs you the friends and family discount and some rehab pieces, but what the county utilizes based off of our agreement with the state is that cost of the permit. So please put the full valuation on, even if you're getting the great friends and family discount, because we want you to be able to get that entire, the permit cost is going to be negligible really at the end for that small amount, and it's really going to help you at the end with your taxes. So we try to, we try to encourage that as much as possible. But yeah, that's a specialty in the C3 district, is that 10-year, 100% in the NRP.
Thank you.
Any other new business? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.